Student recognition for October, before our October board meeting. Before each board meeting, we do do a student recognition. We want you to know right now, there's no obligation to stay for the full meeting, but you're welcome to attend. This is a very special evening, because this is really one of the most compliant groups we ever have. They know how to follow instructions, they work hard. In fact, they're eager to get everything done, so they can get back and work on their homework. Is that true? You'll notice if you scan the crowd, you'll notice that some of the students actually are working on homework during the meeting. But this is an impressive group. This evening, we'll be recognizing students who have been recognized nationally as AP Scholars. Our students at the high school have an opportunity to choose from, I think, 33 or 34 different college classes. We've had consistently more than 800 student registrations in AP at the high school, which is quite remarkable. In addition, we have college in the schools, Project Lead, The Way, and other opportunities. The College Board recognizes students for success on the advanced placement when they've taken three or more AP courses and had a three or better on those, which could grant them college credit. This past summer, 104 White Bear Lake area high school students received notes that they were recognized, 56 members of the class of 2016, they're the ones that are off feeling really good about those AP courses, because their college costs will be lower. Parents, keep this in mind, you already knew that. Students, keep this in mind, your parents will thank you tonight, once again. 36 members of the class of 2017, and 12 members of the class of 2018. For underclass men and women to be recognized means they started taking AP courses early, and they've really been challenging themselves. So by the time they have finished the senior year, they can move up, and sometimes will have as many as seven or eight AP courses, counting for college credit. Parents are smiling, because they know how much college tuition that saves. This evening, we'll have two items that they'll receive. First of all, a certificate. Board Chair Newberg. And secondly, the coveted bear pin. Mr. Kimball. You probably don't know yet, but if you wear that bear pin, it can get your admission into... Well, Mrs. Vettie, you can write them the letter later, and tell them all the things that they can get into. Now, a number of students this evening are at other activities. We have sports going on this evening, a number of activities, so not everyone is here. So I'll read the names of those who are here this evening, and you can applaud, you can do anything you wish. Each student will be recognized, and then the students, we've asked you to stay off to the side, and then at the end, we'll take a picture of everyone together. So first of all, our AP Scholars who participated in AP exams and received a three or higher and three or more exams. First of all, Connor Barton, an 11th grader. Caitlin Cannon, 11th grade. Emma Deutsch, 12th grade. Megan Gamrad, 11th grade. Daniel Johnson, 11th grade. Madison Lepault, 11th grade. 12th grader Travis Momson. 11th grade Ashley Rennstedt. 12th grade Molly Riley. 12th grade Austin Timmermanis. Next category is AP with Honor, students who've participated in three or more exams and received an average of 3.25 or higher, called AP Scholars with Honor. This evening, we have with us a 12th grader Mica Anderson. Another 12th grader Kylie Noonan. Third category for this evening are AP Scholars with Distinction, who've participated in three or more exams with a 3.5 average score or higher. This evening, Chad Holman, 12th grader. And another 12th grader Mitzi Probst. The overall figures, I thought should be interesting. So 56 members of last year's graduating class, and then for the grads, 25 were AP Scholars, 17 AP Scholars with Honor, 13 AP Scholars with Distinction, and one AP Scholar with Distinction, and a national AP Scholar. So for those of you, whether you're juniors or seniors, you have even greater awards to attain for next year. So work hard, and we have one more thing for you to do before you rush home to work on your homework. Please come forward to have your photograph taken with the school board. And parents, you may take pictures. And as many as you wish.
All right, I can see everyone, that's good. Actually, Joanna, hop in the window, there we go. Okay, perfect. Then do you want to step over and lose your... Perfect. There we go. Perfect. So I can see you all. Thank you. All right, right here, we'll do a bunch. All righty. Then if parents want to take some pictures?
Students, if they have one more assignment for you to do, don't leave until... They're still going. Now, students, there are two more things I'd like to remember. First of all, at student recognition nights, there is no such a thing as a parent doing anything embarrassing. So the fact that you have received that bear pin, it protects parents from doing anything embarrassing. So you can't say anything about how long they took you to take pictures. It's a kind of responsibility, I want you to scan, put your certificate under your arm, and give a round of applause to your parents. We have a few more cookies. Please enjoy your time. Stephanie would be happy to take a family photo with you. So students, you are dismissed. You can give a cookie, or to work on homework as you wish.
To order this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624, would the clerk please call the roll? Chapman?
Here.
Fahy? Here. Kimball?
Here.
Mullin?
Here.
Newberg?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
All right, would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we have an agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Marge by a nose, Ms. Newmaster by a nose. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed. All right. We also have before us a consent agenda, that consists of items that are before the board on a routine basis every month, that we vote on in one fell swoop. One of the items that is always in our consent agenda is a resolution to accept gifts which have been made to the school district. This month is no exception. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 gifts, which were made in the previous month. The Health Partners Clinic in White Bear Lake donated a large number of school supplies to Birch Lake Elementary. We also had school supplies donated by Orchard Dental Group. The Wells Fargo Foundation provided a very generous $1,000 donation to the high school. And we have donations from Truist, and the Wells Fargo Matching Gifts Program. So to all of those donors, we give you our sincere thank you. Seeing that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball. This calls for a roll call vote. Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. We now have the portion of the meeting called Public Forum. That's an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on issues of interest or concern to them. We do ask people who want to address the board to fill out a card, which is located on the table over there, and bring it up to the deus ahead of time. I do have two cards filled out, so we'll start with these two individuals, and then I'll ask if anybody else wants to make any comments or remarks afterwards. The first person is Nancy Bernstein, or Bernstein?
Bernstein.
Bernstein. Welcome, Ms. Bernstein.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Bernstein. I am representing and speaking on behalf of all of the regular education preschool teachers working here in our district. My goal tonight is to inform you about our unique group of teachers, by telling you about the work that we do, our importance to the district, and how we as professional and licensed teachers are not compensated the same as other teachers in this district. In fact, our group of teachers have not had a pay increase, nor a cost of living adjustment in the past 10 years. We are a small group, working across a number of buildings in our district, including Normandy Park Education Center, Tamarack Nature Center, Hugo Elementary, Vedness Heights Elementary, and this year, Otter Lake Elementary. We are often a child's first teacher outside the home, and we have the opportunity to prepare our youngest learners for kindergarten. We are the first face parents see, as we introduce families to our wonderful district, by establishing the connections and relationships that set up lifelong learning for students and their families. Preschool is no longer a place to simply go and play. Instead, instruction is carefully planned with approved curriculum that is research-based and uses best practices to meet state standards. Classroom environments are carefully created to address all areas of child development. We start at the beginning, building important foundation skills in literacy, math, language, cognitive thinking, gross and fine motor skills. This is a time when critical social-emotional growth develops, and students learn the ability to manage emotions and behaviors to engage in positive social interactions with each other and with teachers, as they transition from learning at home to learning in a group setting. We also teach parents how to support what we are doing at school, and we begin to build the important homeschool connection that continues for many years. As studies prove more and more the significance of really learning, especially since our district is working to meet the initiatives of the world's best workforce, including that all children are ready to start kindergarten, which is now all-day kindergarten, it is more important than ever before to have highly trained, talented, dedicated, and experienced teachers in this district for meeting the needs of a quality preschool experience. You currently have this talent, right here, sitting here tonight. To value these outstanding teachers, retain them, and to be attractive to future staff, there needs to be a shift in compensation. Specifically, we are paid an hourly rate of pay for a set amount of number of hours each day. We haven't had a pay raise or cost of living adjustment for 10 years, nor do we have any of the benefits that the teachers on the master teacher contract have, such as reasonable sick leave, seniority, medical, dental, life insurance, disability, or the ability to increase our pay via lane changes, with the financial benefit to further our education. Interestingly though, early childhood special education teachers that we collaborate and team teach with, as well as early childhood family education teachers, are already part of this master teacher contract. It is just a small group of regular education preschool teachers that are left out of the professional compensation that we deserve. Our district is proud of our community core values of compassion, integrity, respect, responsibility, and service. We start instilling these values with our youngest students, and they quickly began to feel part of something special. What did it mean to be a bear in the White Bear Lake area schools? As preschool teachers, we too want to be part of the big picture, being recognized, valued, and treated the same as the other exceptional teaching staff we have throughout our schools. Our contribution is worthy, performing the same work with the same expectations as other teachers, the only difference being the age of the students that we work with. Part of the strategic plan states the importance of fostering connections with and amongst students and staff, to ensure we all feel valued, supported, and understood. As teaching staff, part of feeling valued is not only recognizing the key role that we play, it is also acknowledging that we are professional teachers, and we are part of the collective power of all the teaching staff in this district, working together for the success of all students. We are passionate, and we love the work that we do. We play a critical role in our district with our young students and their families. We also strongly believe that it is time to be recognized for that work, and being compensated fairly with the other teachers is a tangible way for the district to show that we indeed are valued, supported, and understood. We appreciate you taking the time to listen to us speak tonight, and share with you who we are, and express the joy that we have in our role as early educators in this district. We would welcome the opportunity to talk more with you and engage in further conversation. Thank you. And as a final note, it's great to see one of our previous students, Brianna, up there tonight. She was my student before she went to kindergarten at Normandy Park.
Oh my. I was. Thank you very much, Ms. Bernstein, you're an excellent spokesperson, and thank you also for the written materials that you provided all of us. Thank you very much. Our other person who has asked in advance to speak at public forum is Andrew Adams III.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Andrew Adams, and I was asked by the Indian Ed Parent Committee to address you all this evening on behalf of the committee, but most importantly, on behalf of the indigenous students that are enrolled in the district, and to start the process for discussing, getting the district to recognize the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, as the city of Minneapolis, the city of St. Paul, the Seattle Public School District, and a variety of other different governmental entities and non-governmental entities have recently done so. And actually, what's very interesting about that is that Governor Dayton, I think just a few days ago, signed a governor proclamation identifying today as Indigenous Peoples' Day and not as Columbus Day. And I think one of the requests that is driving that is that for so long, native students, native Hawaiian students, and indigenous students across the globe, public education systems have been used to kind of, for lack of a better word, to marginalize them, that like, education was kind of a tool for getting, say, young native folks to stop speaking their languages, or identifying with the communities that they were brought up in, in terms of, from a traditional standpoint. And that's not to say that that happens in this day and age, but through studies of institutional racism, and just collective struggles that communities have had to gone through, it's been recognized that when you speak to children in an educational standpoint, and you give them a platform by which they can feel empowered, that it can have very positive results in terms of their comfort level in an educational setting, and then also just empowering them as individuals. And I think everyone would acknowledge that there's different achievement gaps, and American Indian students, especially in the state of Minnesota, that that gap is pretty significant. And I think every step that a school district, state government, local government can take to empower those students would be extremely beneficial. And so with that, I know that the Indian Ed Parent Committee for White Bear Public Schools would like the process, to start the process of having a dialogue concerning that. We were actually meeting upstairs for our monthly meeting, and the committee took up and formally adopted a draft resolution that we'll forward on to you all for your consideration, and a letter to the board, kind of explaining, kind of the thought process behind the request. But the purpose of being here this evening is just to kind of formally bring it to your attention, and that it's not happening kind of like in a vacuum. I mean, I think with Governor Dayton signing that proclamation, the fact that the state of South Dakota doesn't even formally recognize Columbus Day, it's actually called Native American Day, and that large school districts and other large cities across the country have done that, and it's not a request of, okay, like me too, like these other places have done it, why haven't you? But it comes from a place of sincere, a sincere belief and request that the parent committee has to, to the district, to create a space that's empowering and positive as possible for the American Indian students that are in the district. So with that, you know, thank you for the time to bring this to your attention, and I'll make sure that those materials... I've spoken with Superintendent Lovett and Director Fahy about it, and we'll, you know, get those materials packaged up and formally in front of the board as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. We greatly appreciate you being here and speaking tonight, and I make a commitment that we will follow up with you and with the American Indian Committee to discuss this in further detail. To you and to Ms. Bernstein, just to make it clear, during public forum, we listen, and we were all listening very intently to both of your comments. We don't normally engage in back and forth or responses, so I don't want you to think that our silence up here is that we're not interested. We are very, very interested in what you both had to say, and we greatly appreciate you both being here tonight.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Is there anybody else here who would like to address the school board as part of public forum? All right, seeing none, we'll turn to our first information item, C1, Recognition of Finance Awards. Dr. Lovett.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd ask Assistant Superintendent Wayne Kaczmarek to come forward, and Controller Mary Vaske to come forward as well, knowing that she's very happy to be at the school board meeting. Her favorite meeting of the year. Dr. Kaczmarek.
Thank you, Dr. Lovett, Madam Chair, members of the board. So for the past 16 years, and I know your memo says 17, but true to form, Mary corrected me today on my calculation, so I think it was appropriate that I shared that with you. So for the past 16 consecutive years, of which, all of which Mary Vaske has been here for that time period, White Bear Lake area schools have been recognized by the Association of School Business Officials and the Government Finance Officers Association for excellence in governmental accounting and financial reporting. And so for that amount of time, we've received two awards each year. This from the Association of School Business Officials, and this from the Government Finance Officers Association. And so annually, we present these awards to the school board. It's quite an honor. It takes quite a few people to earn these awards, and in particular, Mary Vaske and our accountant Lee Lor, among others. And so it's a great testament to all the hard work that Mary and others do. So we'd like to present this to...
Please, Dr. Kaczmarek. While you're doing that, thank you so much to you and everyone in finance and accounting who make these possible. I'm going to pass them up and down, so people can look at them. But I also want to say a special thanks to Mary Vaske. Mary, you rock. You are a superhero in accounting and handling the financial matters of this district. We so appreciate everything that you do for us, and I know we're going to continue seeing you up here every year in the foreseeable future, to be recognized for receiving these awards. Congratulations. Does anyone else have anything for Dr. Kaczmarek or Ms. Vaske? George, Mr. Kimball?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, thank you so much for your work. It's a great honor. Other districts don't have this 16-year streak going, and I'm thinking next year we get Lee Lor up here, too.
Thank you so much to both of you. All right, we'll turn to information item C2, the superintendent's report. Dr. Lovett.
Madam Chair, members of the board, several items to bring attention to this evening. First of all, I want to acknowledge that before the meeting this evening, we recognized some of the 104 students who had been recognized by National Advanced Placement as AP Scholars at various levels. We're very proud of the work that they do, and it was wonderful to have them here this evening. A couple of things that we want to bring to the public's attention. For the past two weeks, 16 students from our sister school in Leipzig, Germany, have been with us, staying with host families, visiting our schools throughout the district, and learning what it's like to be Minnesotan. All of them were at the homecoming game, and they... So if you heard "Go Bears" with a German accent, you can pretty... You figured it out, exactly. We had a wonderful... This is the first, two weeks ago Sunday, their welcome night, where they all became bears. They had their own personal White Bear Rec t-shirts, which they wore with pride. Last night was a testimony to the host families, a gathering with our teachers and our German teachers and each of the host families. Because for this program to work, host families in the White Bear Lake area schools take in the students for about an 18-day period. And last night, as I listened to the students thanking their host families, that's really what this is about. The students who have hosted the students from Germany, and next June, we'll have the opportunity to go to Germany, they'll go to Leipzig, and they will stay with those same families. So it's a true, true partnership. I'd like to especially acknowledge teachers Frau Booth and Frau Waschold, our German teachers, who put heart and soul into this. It's a very special program. I want to acknowledge also, this week, 50 students were inducted into the National Junior Honor Society at a ceremony at Central, bringing their numbers at Central to 77 strong. Students are selected based on their GPAs and their work ethic. They must maintain a 3.8 GPA and complete 20 hours of service through the year. Sunrise Park also has a Junior Honor Society. Their inductions will be occurring in the spring. So we want to congratulate all those middle school students. Kindness in Chuck, you've seen this, too. North Campus in both of our middle schools and some of our elementary schools had an activity called Kindness in activity called Kindness in Chalk. And I think the picture does the best more than words, shows what this is about. The students came very early last Friday, and they wrote messages of hope and encouragement for their peers to kick off October as Bullying Awareness Month. Very, very special events at each of the campuses. This coming Friday, October 14th, is going to be a very busy day. The Harvest Bowl football game will take place as the Bears take on Stillwater. Spectators are invited to bring three or more non-perishable food items to donate to the White Bear Lake Emergency Food Show in lieu of an emission charge. So you're doing good, and you get in free. The last couple of years, this has been a very special and successful day where our community has really demonstrated service and compassion. Couple of other things that are going on this Friday night. During the game, two of our graduates from White Bear Lake Area High School, or area schools, or even folks Mariner are going to be inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame. Andrea Peterson and our very own John Anderson. John for hockey, and he's a humble guy, so if you see John this week, or see him on Friday night, be sure to acknowledge his great work. That's, John Anderson looks almost like that now, but that was his high school graduation picture. Also on Friday night, the Bear Legacy Fundraising Event will take place, sponsored by our foundation. I know that both Scott Wilson and Mr. Kimball here are actively involved as liaisons. And 1981 graduate from White Bear Lake Mariner, Tim McNiff, will be serving as the emcee for the event. Unity Day, Wednesday, October 19th. I talked about Kindness in Chalk. This is also part of National Bullying Prevention Month. There'll be a Unity Day pledge video that will be shared this coming weekend, and this is an opportunity for our students to wear orange. They do have orange in their wardrobe as a support for Unity Day. Bree and I were talking before, that Mary Poppins will be on this year. Our musical, the Fall Musical, will be performed the two weekends, the middle weekends of November, November 11th and 12th, and 17th through 19th, at our North Campus Theater. And the tickets will be going on later, on sale later this week, but encourage you to get your tickets early. This is sure to be a sellout, so we want people to not be disappointed. I'm going to start the final item I have for this evening, and then I'll pass it on to our student representative. Homecoming update. From an adult perspective, it was wonderful to see the energy and enthusiasm and support students had for one another, from the dress-up days at the high school campuses and middle school campuses, to the parade and activities. I'd like to make a special note about something that occurred in the parade, if you weren't there. This year, the grand marshal for the parade was our very own school board member and retired White Bear Lake teacher, Marge Newmaster. Marge, would you show your white parade wave? Bree, on to you.
All right, so, yeah, what a successful and spirited homecoming week for our school district. With the Homecoming Game comes many special events and experiences in White Bear Lake. I'm going to showcase and highlight some of the main special events that make our community so great. First off, North and South Campus boasts, celebrated Homecoming Week with a pep fest, which celebrated and showcased our 2016 royalty, which was super fun. It also showcased our dance sign, our senior boys' dance, our teachers, our cheerleaders, our captains of all the fall sports, and all of the athletes involved in fall sports. Also, our cheerleading program put on a clinic inviting all students, grades K through fifth, to participate with us in the Homecoming Game. We had a record attendance of 112 Bear Cup cheerleaders, which is so awesome, and just shows how great our school spirit is from all grade levels. Also, our Homecoming Committee put on a phenomenal dance centered around its theme, Alice in Wonderland. The Spirit Days leading up to the dance involved a theme which connected the pieces together great. Also, the DJ that night said, "White Bear Lake, your love shines, and you are all so special." So thank you to our Homecoming Committee for putting on such a fantastic week and dance. Next, our junior and senior class officers have been named. Our junior class officers, led by Ms. Marsh and Ms. Johnson, will began planning prom. And our senior class officers, led by Mr. Danielson, will began planning our senior all-night party. The senior class is also deciding on what the 2017 class motto will be. I don't know what it will be yet, but I look forward to telling you guys as soon as it is announced. Also, our yearbook team is hard at work. If you're ever at a sporting event, or school activity, or special thing happening in our high school, make sure to get it in the picture so you make your mark on the yearbook. Also, prices keep going up. Make sure to purchase your book as soon as you can. The final thing I am very, very excited to tell you guys about is the growth in our culture club in our high school. Due to the outreach during lunches and providing information, hanging up posters and the outreach they've done, there has been a huge growth in our culture club with many different backgrounds, and it's just a great way to understand all different cultures in our community. September was a fun filled month for our high school, and I'm looking forward to many upcoming great experiences for the month of October.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lovett. Thank you very much, Bree. All right, we'll turn to our first discussion item, D1, the World's Best Workforce Report on Academic Measures. Ms. Paul, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Lovett, members of the board. This is the third conversation that we're having about our World's Best Workforce work that is required by statutes striving for the world's best workforce. The first conversation we had, we talked about alignment to our strategic plan and the importance of us acknowledging that we have a good strategic plan in place, but we have to continue to look at how the needs of our students are being met, and really emphasizing the alignment of what's happening in the classroom, all the way up to this boardroom conversation, so that we all know what conversations happen to set goals, not only at the district level, but how it connects to the building level, and then connects all the way to the classroom level. Then we had our time together last work-study, in which we talked about our comprehensive update, and we shared a lot of data and the strategic priorities we had, to share areas of celebration and strength, and then connected to areas for growth that this year's priorities were established from. And so tonight really is about the process. When we talk about identifying where we need to work on and what our strengths are, in addition to working with our staff and administration, we also work directly to hear from our students, and then also to hear from our parents. And so we just want to share with you what that process has looked like, so that you can kind of see what the work ahead is going to look as we carry this conversation through this year. First of all, striving for the world's best workforce is really centered around five key milestones, which we've reviewed in great detail. Brian Morris will be joining me after I give this brief presentation, in case you have any questions about any of the milestones that we shared data with you about. School board, so you have a critical role in the whole way that the statute is laid out, in terms of being aware and hearing from the work that we've done, that not only comes from administration, but also from the community. And so part of the established requirement is that we have an advisory committee. The advisory committee met several times last year, and some of the topics that came up, the pattern usually was that we shared a presentation, we had a discussion, and there was question and answer, in which we were responsible to follow up at the building level or at the district level to get more information, and then there would be a follow-up session in which really it would be listening and sharing. And there were several topics that were of priority to the parents in our group, that we spent a lot of time and did some further analysis, did student focus groups, teacher focus groups, that are going to show up in recommendations, not only in our course proposals, but that also were part of the work that we talked about in terms of closing achievement and opportunity gaps. The requirements in the statute for what is required for the advisory committee is very specific. And so not only do we really need to mirror the demographics of our district, we had to consider representation from the south side and north side of the district, having representation from all different groups of faculty represented in our work, because we want that diverse perspective. We place a high value on doing our best, but part of doing our best comes from knowing what to do, so that we can do our best. And sometimes when we try to make all of our decisions from our own perspective, we don't get the full insights of how to create the best experience that we can for our students. So when we bring to you recommendations, that is one of the statutory requirements. We want you to specifically know what our parents are saying and what this broader community is saying. We have students, teachers, staff members, administrators, and parents from across the district. And we've gotten several recommendations from them, but one of the things that was very important that we wanted to make sure to share with you is that we've made significant progress in this district on closing achievement and opportunity gaps, and we've had a lot to celebrate. We've talked about students that graduated and accessed full two-year scholarships. We've talked about students that, one of the best gifts we have in this district is a wide range of college-level courses, and we wanted to increase access and opportunity for students to experience those courses, if that's where they were at in their educational journey, and it was a fit for them. We didn't want any student in this district to feel invisible, or feel that they weren't going to be able to connect with other students, or with the teacher, or understand all of the responsibilities that, from their perspective, other students already had the experience, and that they were, for the first time, taking on this challenge, and wanting to make sure that they were fully supported. In sharing all that progress, it's important to know that we're not there yet. We want to, we're designed to meet, to develop the unique challenges, talents of every single student in this district, and we don't want anybody to feel left out of this really passionate, wonderful mission that we have. Every student, we want to develop the unique talents and abilities that they have. And so our parents want to make sure that you here, that we need to keep focusing on the work that we're doing, and continue to include one more student every time that we are doing our work, and take out any structural barriers or things that we have in place that might be limiting students from accessing the opportunities we have here, because it's a great district, and we want every single student to be part of it. And then the second piece was that they really want us to continue to be very intentional about providing opportunities and communicating with parents at each different touch point that we have for helping them partner with us, and helping us partner with them in reaching our students. So those were the two key takeaways that a lot of that comprehensive update hit on. And then we also are required to post an annual progress report, and so there is a link on our website for anyone to access, and then you also were given that advance as well. So our requirements that we have for a board, we've covered all those requirements that we have to do for statute, but I think more importantly, it's connected to the strategic work that was identified in our strategic plan, that really is how we've designed to carry out our mission in the district. And then the upcoming advisory meetings will go through that same cycle. We will be having conversations that we will, they have the opportunity to share things that we need to focus on, that we may not have identified ourselves in our current strategic work. And then some of the topics we'll be bringing to you that are connected to our World's Best Workforce Plan are identified here, in terms of focusing on those milestones from pre-create all the way through graduation, and making sure that we are all connected and hearing some of the work that not only we're finding success in, but what we're also trying to make sure that we're asking ourselves the right questions, questions to continuously improve. So with that, Brian Morris is going to join me if you have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Paul, welcome, Mr. Morris. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Paul or Mr. Morris? Me?
Not yet.
Not yet? I think, was Mr. Morris just going to be available for questions, or did you have a presentation also?
No, just questions.
So it is time. I know you did provide us in our packets with the report that is going to the Department of Education, so we have reviewed that. Any questions? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Kimball.
It just wasn't ready a few seconds ago, but now I am. So with the report, there's, and I'm, I don't, do you have the report?
Yes. There's a link up there, I think, on one of the previous slides. I don't know if that's a live link to the report that's on the website.
I'm on page 69 of the packet.
I don't, I don't think it's a live link.
School board, it's 2C, Close the Achievement Gap Among All Groups.
Yes.
It says, "By 2017-18, participation in concurrent enrollment courses will mirror the participation rate of our benchmark group," and I just wasn't sure what that meant. What's the benchmark group?
When we look at enrollment in college courses, the, excuse me, the group that has the highest level of participation, we looked at both racial/ethnic demographics and socioeconomic. And the group with the highest level of participation was our white and Asian students with a, from higher-income families. So if we define equity in participation in college-level courses as every other racial/ethnic and socioeconomic combination, participating at the same level as that benchmark group.
Well, that might be 30%, 40% or something like that? And I don't, we don't need the exact percentage, but, so then it says in the goal status, goal in progress, contract for achieving that goal. So that's next year, right? So we think we're going to hit that next year?
We are moving in that direction. In the interim, we've closed the gap, so our benchmark group, we caught up with our 2015-16 level of participation in all groups except three. Because of our efforts, our benchmark group participation has increased also, therefore, this is a good thing, maintaining some of the gaps because we've had participation level go up across all groups. So we had closed, we'd caught up in, to a previous gap that we had in all areas, but all demographic groups, but three. Because of our efforts, the benchmark group participation level went from 51% to 64%, which is a good thing, but it also created gaps that we had closed. We're playing catch-up, so the benchmark group is increasing participation as well.
So if they would just stay where they were at, we'd be okay.
You don't want to say that, but yes.
Well, and we're not ever going to say that, because we want every student, you know, part of, part of what we do is we want every student accessing these courses. And so if, you know, we've got great people that are going to be able to go look into our data and make sure that we're really continuing to set high goals, so all students that are ready for that opportunity can access it. And so I think it's a great thing that you set a goal of 51%, and we met it. And now we've got more participating, so we're going to set a new goal. We're always going to set that higher goal.
Mr. Kimball, did you have additional questions?
I did.
Oh, please, go ahead.
First of all, I just, I think that, you know, the plans and the goals and the actions are really set up nicely and with what appears to be best practice, so I really commend you for that. It's a huge challenge for districts, not only in our area, but in the state and in the nation, to get to, you know, to the goals that we want, especially regarding the achievement gap. So with goal to be all students in third grade achieving grade-level literacy, we didn't meet that goal, but, not to excuse us, but the most are not meeting that goal. The achievement gap continues to be a huge, big problem, especially in Minnesota. So I see that we have things in place, and one of the notable things is the literacy coaching model. And do we think that that's kind of, I mean, are we looking at that as being a key? I know that we've also done book studies and things like that, but what do we think?
Well, first, I'd say what we were doing by really being intentional about closing the opportunity gap in our college-level courses, there's a lot of districts asking us, "How did you do it? We want to learn from you." The same was us saying, "Okay, our third-grade literacy scores, it's a pivotal milestone." You know, after kindergarten readiness, that first critical milestone, when you shift from learning to read to reading to learn, is just critical, and we needed to learn from others. And this is a strategy that we know that we've got a really good handle on what those people are doing in classrooms, they're working- They're working hand-in-hand with teachers that are craving to do a better job and learn more. And so we're very confident that we're going to see our reading scores bump up and, you know, once you have those new tools in your toolkit, then you can expand your reach to make sure that that reading, the reading standards are a continuum and we need to make sure those supports are in throughout the system so that students really are confident in applying their reading skills across all subject areas.
Thanks. And I know that AMSD is sort of hosting an ad hoc committee that's going to be addressing this topic with, you know, representatives from most, probably most of the schools in the metro area and even engage, I believe, a contractor to just really focus on getting those best practices and sharing amongst the groups. I don't think, and I think White Bear is considering joining that group at a cost, and I would just encourage us to pursue that.
Any other questions or Ms. Newmaster?
I just have one and, you know, I'm impressed, it's a great plan and it looks like it's encouraging for improvement. And mine is just a picky one, as I was reading it and looking at section one, and, you know, I do see there's the special committee meetings that have their own schedule with all the stakeholders involved, but it does say under 1B that annual public meeting is not supposed to be a regularly scheduled school board meeting, and I wasn't sure why, but they were so specific about it. So how do we meet that requirement? Or does the advisory committee meet the requirement? Because it's supposed to be a school board.
This is, we, Madam Chair, we actually met that requirement by talking about this in the work study in addition to this meeting. So the author's intent was that there was more dialogue around details so that you could ask all the great questions you always ask us in the work study presentation so that it wasn't just a high-level update, but really getting into more of a comprehensive look at the work.
So we weren't required to have an additional meeting from the work study and the normal board meeting? That's what I didn't know if that's what that meant. We were supposed to do another meeting.
This actually was not required, this presentation here, in terms of updating on the process that we went through in order to gain perspective to inform our planning.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Fahey?
The partnership with Century with the Critical Reading and Algebra III, you know, that's a new partnership, but is there, like, is that envisioned to continue indefinitely or is there a timeline for it? How is Century looking at that also?
Century is, has been an amazing partner with us in really wanting to tackle the challenge that's across the state and the nation and that we also have been struggling with making sure all of our students are in college-level courses right when they graduate. And so the partnership we have with them, we now have one of our 12th grade classes by design now, all of our students will graduate at minimum, meeting the requirements that will move them right into a college-level course when they graduate. So we've made some significant progress in their willingness to partner with us and really be thoughtful about what they define as success, which is wanting students that go to Century to graduate. It doesn't benefit anyone and most importantly, not the student if they're having to pay money for credits that don't earn them college credits. So that is a big part of the work that we're doing.
Okay, so we're looking at that continuing for a long period of time, that partnership with Century or?
We're only growing, we're growing the partnership, yes. And you'll hear about that more in the course proposals at the next work-study meeting, but we're continuing to not only be thoughtful about what core courses you need for any step you're going to take in a two-year or four-year degree, but also our career pathways. And so we're continuing to find ways to partner with them in those areas as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chapman?
Overall, it's a good plan, too. I very much agree that it's moving in the right direction. I do have a question back to 2C that Mr. Kimball had cited. It is more of a quantitative measurement rather than a qualitative measurement. I mean, we're measuring how many students are taking these college-level courses. Now, I realize we may not want to necessarily have a qualit, or excuse me, qualitative measurement put into what we send to the state, yet at the district level, I, I'm trying to recall if we have talked about this in the work-study and if we have, forgive me, but just wondering how these students are doing. Yeah, the numbers are up, but the bigger question, I guess, in my mind is how are these students doing? And if you're not prepared to answer that tonight, I'm fine with that, but I would like, you know, some information on that.
Well, I think it's a good opportunity to credit some teachers that we worked with administration last spring to say now that we've identified and students have registered to take these courses, what kind of teacher supports and what kind of student supports do we need to make sure that they're in place so they're successful? And so teachers on the committee identified training in terms of strategies that they wanted to develop over the summer so that they were ready for the students coming into class. And then students attended, had the opportunity to attend a training for not only meeting other students that were going to be in the course, doing some team-building things, hearing some of the language and what was on the course outline and a DBQ that some, a lot of students may know that lingo well, a document-based essay. So question, so what does that mean when you're asked to do that and what's the work going to look like? So that they kind of were armed with not only the language, but some, build some friendships so that they didn't feel alone walking into a class that they were nervous that they may not have friends in. And we had close to 100 students come for that opportunity in the summer. So we've been doing a lot of the proactive work to help people feel successful and now we're monitoring those supports and making sure that when students are feeling, you know, a little vulnerable, that they've got a trusted adult they can talk to. And that was all part of the process going into it, that we're now using all of the information we gained to make sure they're set up for success.
But in terms of their success rate, I guess, in these courses, we are tracking that, I assume, then by the various demographics and we'll have a report at some point going forward, unless we've already received it and I'm just now thinking of it, which is a very good possibility.
We did the process of registration last year. This is the first time this cohort has taken classes this fall and you absolutely will be updated with that information.
Thank you.
Ms. Newmaster?
My brain was twirling here as I'm thinking of all the kids that are taking college in the schools and AP classes and how it's significantly more participating this year. Have we added a lot more sections? I've also taught high-level classes and I remember having 38 in a class and that's, you know, how are we, are we supporting it that way, too? Or do we have classes bursting at the seams? Because we really have a lot more enrollment now and that's good.
We have additional sections, yes, yes.
Any other questions for either Ms. Paul or Mr. Morris? Thank you very much. Excellent work.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll now turn to discussion item D2, which is a first reading of six school board policies. The district has many policies which govern its operations. Periodically, we need to revise some existing policies. It could be because there have been statutory or legislative changes. We also periodically encounter the need for a new policy. When that happens, the district will bring either an amended existing policy or a proposed new policy to the policy committee of the board. We review it. Once we have reviewed that, it comes to the school board for what we are doing tonight and that is the first reading. The board has been giving these six policies last week. They've had ample opportunity to review them. This will be our chance to ask any questions or have any discussion regarding these. Once they pass through the first reading, they'll be back before the board, most likely next month, for a second reading, which is the board's opportunity to adopt the policies. There are six up for first reading tonight. I'm going to ask Mr. Kimball to briefly summarize the first three, what's new, what's proposed, what are the changes, and then I will do a very brief summary of the last three. Mr. Kimball?
Okay, thank you. In my mind, this is where it gets really exciting because we, I'm not sure everyone agrees. I'm just sorry the rest of the preschool teachers aren't here for this. So for the most part, these six policies do not have significant changes, although one of the policies that our chair will talk about is actually a brand-new policy, so it's all new. Policy 101 is titled Legal Status of the School District. And really, the purpose of this policy is just to clarify exactly what kind of governmental kind of legal status the district has and that has to do with the relationship the district has to other entities such as county government and municipalities, cities, what kind of powers and authority it has, such as for creating contracts, that type of thing, raising funds. And really, the only change, as my fellow board members can see, is really we just added a cross-reference. So there's actually no substantive changes, there's just a new policy, 704, that was added as a cross-reference. The next one I have is policy 406, Public and Private Personnel Data. And this policy exists to guide the school district employees as to the data the school district collects and maintains regarding its staff, its personnel. And again, very minor changes and for those who have the packet on page 86, there's just a change because the entities that oversee education in the state change, so there's just a removal of the Board of School Administrators to the State Board of Education in the language. And then on page 89, there's just a, again, a wording change, just noting that any questions that staff have regarding personnel data should be directed to the Director of Human Resources, who is in the room and happy to be taking that, those questions. And then also, an added legal reference to this policy, statute 13.601. And then finally, the third policy I have is 508, which is Extended School Year for Certain Students with IEPs or Individualized Education Programs. And the basic purpose of the policy is to make sure that extended school-year services are made available to students who are the subject of an IEP if the IEP team determines that there ought to be an extended school year for that student, extended instruction. So really, again, very few changes, mostly having to, or all having to do with the legal And an additional clause, just noting that services to non-resident students who are temporarily placed in our school district are, may be provided extended school-year services if they're placed in the school district and as long as everything's done according to applicable state law. So then a couple of additional state statutes and federal statute added to the references.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. The first of my three policies is policy 522, Student Sex Nondiscrimination. This was an existing policy. We made one minor change in the general statement of policy. Section 2B of that policy, primarily just to clarify wording, there were really no substantive changes. The next policy is policy 721, Uniform Grant Guidance Policy Regarding Federal Revenue Sources. This is a brand-new policy. Dr. Kazmicek brought it to our attention. It is recommended by the Minnesota School Boards Association and it is intended to ensure our compliance with the requirements of the federal uniform grant guidance regulations. So this is an entirely new policy. Our outside auditor, Mr. Eichton, James Eichton, has reviewed this and recommends that we approve it. The final policy I have, if I scroll ahead, is policy 807, Health and Safety. This was an existing policy. We had some changes recommended by the policy committee and some recommended by MSBA, the Minnesota School Boards Association. Really, the only semi-substantive change was to clarify that although we are required to have a safety committee under Minnesota statute 182.676, there was a question whether or not if we also have an advisory committee, that the advisory committee could perform the same functions of the safety committee. So that was clarified in section 2B. We also added a few different areas of programs or plans that the health and safety plan would address in 4A. Those are highlighted in our materials. And then, as Mr. Kimball referenced for his three policies, we do have some new statutory and regulatory sites at the end. So that is a summary of what's new or changed in these policies. Does anyone have any questions or any discussion regarding these policies? Yes, Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, the policy 508, I was just curious, I think it might be a typo, I'm not sure. Right toward the end of the policy, it talks about the district, or a district may provide ESY services, and I'm just wondering if that should be "the," and I'm going back here to that particular policy. It is on page 92 of our packet as of today, and it's letter F. It says, "Services to non-resident students temporarily placed in school district. A school district may provide ESY services to non-resident children." Are we not, is the intent not to be talking about our district and the policy adhering our complaint?
Mr. Kimball?
Yeah, I'm sure it is. I know we took language that was model language. I think "or the" would work, but I, I'm thinking that it's very likely that "the" would in fact be better, so we'll certainly consider that.
I've got two others. Let's see, policy 721, and it would be on page 100, I guess, of our packet. I'm just wondering, Dr. Kazmicek, what the, I'm not clear, it's not clear in my mind what the difference is between procurement by sealed bids, number three on, it's page 100 of our packet, 721-2, or procurement by competitive proposals, other than the fact that one's a sealed bid, one's not. I mean, is that, I mean, there's a few other nuances, the way it looks, too, but I guess I'm wondering what the, you know, what the big difference is between them.
Well, I can give you an example. And the numbers I give you may not exactly match the policy, but this would be state statute. So anything of value of $100,000 or more requires sealed bids. Anything from between $25,000 and $100,000, we could do sealed bids, but generally, that's the area where you can negotiate and you can invite written proposals, but there's a difference. There's one threshold requires sealed bids, one doesn't, but you still, you still receive written proposals generally.
Okay, so it's basically a dollar threshold for the most part? Okay. And then just one other question. In the, the safety policy, which policy number was that, the last, I noticed structural safety was stricken and I was curious why that was. Maybe it's not in this last version. I saw it in the earlier version. And for the page number?
It's on page 119, and I do see that it was, it was stricken. And I'm wondering if it was subsumed by another category. I don't specifically remember a discussion of that in policy committee of why that was was striked out.
Yeah, we can, we can verify that. It was either what Janet suggested or it was a suggestion from MSB model. So I don't have... it was a suggestion from MSB, MSB Model. So, I don't have that handy right now. So, we can check on that and I can get back to you.
Yeah, I went through the list, and it didn't seem like it would fit necessarily anywhere else, but maybe, maybe so. I'd be curious as to why that was-
Or it may not be a category that's, that's highlighted any longer for some reason. So, we can, I can do a little research on that and get back to you.
Thank you. We appreciate that, Dr. Kazmicek. Any other?
Yes, Mr. Kimball.
As I recall with that one, it was that, if you look at, I think this is what it is, but we'll find out for sure, that the others represent more specific, like, programs or, you know, very specific entities or parts of the district, where structural is just a very generic term. So, I believe it is incorporated within the others, because there isn't, you know, a unique safety program or class associated with structural, as opposed to playground safety or something.
And a lot of the times, we do just adopt the changes that the MSBA recommends. So, it would be interesting to find out if this is an amendment that MSBA proposed. All right? Well, thank you. Any, any other questions or discussion regarding any of our six policies? All right, seeing none, we'll move to our first operation item, E1, and that is Action on Contract for Demographic Study. Dr. Kazmicek.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Back in late September, and actually before that, we had some discussion about our facilities planning, plan for this current school year. And one of the items was to begin a site assessment of all of our buildings, and that, that work is underway. And the other part of our work this school year, we had talked about bringing in a demographer to help us understand our enrollment projections. And so, we visited about this in some depth on September twenty-sixth, and so now this is before you to take action. And we're recommending that we take action on the Hazel Reinhardt Consulting Services Agreement. And just, so just a little bit more about, about our enrollment projections, to give you a little more context. So, our internal enrollment projections, we are, we're projecting steady growth over the next five years, an average of about seventy-five students, some years a little more, some years a little less. So, that's, that's a nice, steady growth. But our models that we use are somewhat limited. They're basically a trend line, and so if you're coming out of a period of growth, your trend line will continue to grow. If you're coming out of a period of decline, you will continue to decline. And there are flaws in that model, and so from time to time, it's important for, for school districts to bring somebody in and analyze other things that are going on in the community. And so, for us, we know that there is significant turnover of housing, and we know there is significant growth occurring, in particular in the northern part of the school district. So, what this proposal will include is an analysis that goes a lot deeper than what we're able, what we're able to do. And so, this is a year of data gathering and building baseline information. So, as we, as we move forward and consider facilities needs of the school district, we will have good, solid data about our existing sites and good, solid data about what we're projecting, how we're projecting to grow in the next decade. Let's see, and that, I guess that's about I have for this, unless there are-
Well, let me get a motion on the table first. We have a recommendation that we approve, that we authorize Hazel Reinhardt Consulting Services to provide the district with an enrollment and housing study, as specified in the August thirty, twenty sixteen proposal attached to our materials. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Mullin.
Dr. Kazmicek, can you tell me a little bit about how we found this firm, the process and how that went about?
Sure. Hazel Reinhardt is a retired state demographer who went into consulting, boy, late eighties or early nineties. So, she's been doing this work for quite some time. She's very well-known. She's worked, she's actually worked for, done some work for White Bear Lake in the past. She's worked for over a hundred school districts, school districts. So, she's very well-regarded in the state and has a long track record in the state. So, that's how, if any, if you've, if you're an administrator and you've been around a while, you've, you certainly know Hazel Reinhardt. There aren't a lot of firms that do this work in the state, and she's built a pretty sound reputation.
Any other questions?
Ms. Fahey. I know, I asked at the work study also, in terms of, we've got, you know, the basic study, the enrollment and housing, and then optional. Has there been any more, you know, because we're approving, the total cost would be twenty-five thousand, three hundred, but we may not take all the options.
Right.
So, has there, are we doing the basic first, and then depending upon those results, deciding on some of the optionals?
Right. We'll, we'll begin with the basic work and the enrollment and housing study, and then on the optional enrollment projection category, the, on page one twenty-seven, if you have your packet in front of you, the, the two middle school enrollment projections, the modeling of different high schools, modeling of the effect of Housing Development Hugo, modeling on the effect of open enrollment being closed in Moundsview and Mata Medei, and then the last couple, race ethnicity projections, and then free and reduced meal student projections. Those we would likely go ahead with. The one that we may hold off on for now would be the nine K through five elementary school projections. It's likely that we, that we'll do that at some point, but it might be in, it might be in six or twelve months when we're ready to have discussions about, about boundaries. I think, once we get into the study, it'll help inform whether or not we should do that level of detail by, by attendance area. We may be six months to a year away from needing that data. And I did, I did connect with Hazel on that, and so the proposal stands, and so if we do that down the road, she would honor what she's proposed. So, it could, if you back that out, we'd be right around eighteen thousand rather than twenty-five thousand figure.
Newmaster.
And if I, if I recall from the work study, you had compared this, and we had the information on another firm that was significantly more expensive, and you were familiar and satisfied with the work of this firm.
Right. And actually, we had a good proposal from another firm, that they also do great work. The benefit for us right now with, with Dr. Reinhardt is that she's, she's done a lot of work in the northeast metro, so she's very familiar with open enrollment patterns and Minnesota statute. She's worked with a lot of our neighbors, so I think it's a natural fit for us at this time. The other firm certainly could have done a good job on this, and they would have also gone perhaps beyond what we need right now. They were more of a planning firm, so there was the data, data gathering and projection creation for us, but then also helping us engage the public with processes. And it was, it just seemed like it was maybe a little more than we needed at this time.
Any other questions? All right, this calls for a roll call vote. Chapman?
Aye.
Fahey?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmicek. Our last operational item leads us to, I likely need to close this meeting. We do need to discuss, as a board, possible settlement of litigation brought against the school district. We intend to discuss that with the attorney for the district. Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh five subdivision three B authorizes school boards to close portions of public meetings when they discuss matters such as these. I will entertain a motion in a moment to close the meeting temporarily until we have the opportunity to discuss these matters with district council. But in the meantime, I want to explain to the people who are attending that we will close, we're going to move the school board up to two oh six, room two oh six, to meet with the attorney. Once we're done with those confidential discussions, we will come back to this room, reopen the meeting in public session, and most likely take action on what we discuss up in two oh six. So, for those of you who want to stay, I can't tell you how long we're going to be upstairs. We don't have a set time. We'll discuss it until all of the school board's questions are answered, and then return back to this room. That's the bad news, that we don't have a firm time estimate. The good news is there's still cookies left over there from our student recognition earlier in the evening, so feel free to have some, some cookies and some water. So, at this point, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting for discussion of attorney-client privileged matters.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we are closed, and could the school board please move to room two oh six?
All right, we are back in open session, following our closed session meeting to discuss with district attorneys, the matters involved in potential litigation against the districts. And we do have two settlement agreements, which we would like to present to the board, and I invite our district attorney, Margaret Selfin, former, to provide us information about these settlement agreements.
Thank you, Madam Chair, school board members. You have two settlement agreements before you. One, the first one is with Susan Anne Arthod, and the settlement agreement is between Susan Anne Arthod and White Bear Lake School District. This was litigation in federal court. I'm recommending approval of the settlement agreement to be paid by the school district's insurer, and it was recommended for settlement by the school district's insurer, in the amount of fourteen thousand, in a check to Fond du Galley Kingdom, Inc., and for a check for twenty-six thousand payable to Susan Anne Arthod.
Why don't we take this one first? We have a recommendation that we approve the settlement agreement between the district and Susan Anne Arthod, in a total amount of forty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. The settlement agreement, if approved, will become public. We have substantial discussions in public session about it. Given that, does anybody have any additional questions for Ms. Selfin or Ms. Van Ness? All right, this calls for a roll call vote. Chapman?
Aye.
Fahey?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
I have seen.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
That settlement agreement is approved. How we discuss the second settlement, please?
The second settlement agreement is between Duane Neighbors and the school district, for a total amount of sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. I would recommend approval of the settlement.
All right, we have a recommendation that we approve a settlement agreement between the school district and Duane Neighbors, in the total amount of sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve the settlement agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kimball. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Once again, we have discussed this potential settlement agreement upstairs, and in great detail, do, does anyone have any additional questions for Ms. Selfin? Right, this calls for a roll call vote. Chapman?
Aye.
Fahey?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
I have seen.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And Wilson?
Aye.
Right, that settlement agreement is approved as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Selfin, for your assistance on these matters.
Thank you.
Right, the last item on our board agenda is board forum. Now, I'm going to leave for the board members at this late hour to share any information about upcoming events or anything that they feel would be most interesting for their whole board members to know. Does anyone have anything this evening in the board forum? Mr. Wilson?
And I'll be sure. All right, there's two events occurring beyond the Hovers School game. First is a labor equipment house that's on Little Canyon Road, and I'll just say it, which ties right into our world's best board course program. If anyone's interested, the university owner, I'll give you more information. It's basically around noon, and we'll work up on it. It's free, and then they'll do the facilities. The second thing, that evening, for those of you that have not purchased the ladies' event tickets, and I do know there are still some available, but at all folks, country club reception specs at six, the program will turn eight, and then fifteen, and thirty. And I'll just bring that to everyone's attention.
And that's the fundraiser for White Bear Lake, you're a education foundation.
It is.
Right. Anyone else have anything for the board forum? Mr. Mullin?
Yes, also on Friday night, there is Journey Homes Dinner. It's a great dinner honoring our veterans. They're building three homes right here in our district in the mountains heights, and I believe the tickets are on sale. If anybody would like to know about it, you can let me know, and I would more than happy to reach the information.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Mr. Kimball?
Just want to note, a significant milestone retirement, a pupil support assistant from Central Middle School, effective today or something, and twenty-one years working in our district in the form of staff. Say thank you so much, great job. On our agenda, we have a few new staffs, long-term assignments, some substitute assignments, also other new staffs. So, as part of their mandate to watch the school board meeting on cable, will come aboard, and we're so happy you chose us. And then finally, we heard about the play, I guess we played Mary Poppins coming in, and that is just favors that are also, I'm sure, others. So, we are really looking forward to that, and I want to claim the only thing that I can do with that, many people can't, because I can say super-
A freshman sitting next to the other nurses?
Tab.
Oh, okay, because they tap me there.
Don't shift out enough to be a state freshman, tabby, you're a goose. That's all.
I love you, man. Well, on that note, I will now take a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, I will do that.
I second that, have adjourned.